Called September 19th meeting of Person County Board of. To have a quorum will lead us in an invitation. I ask Commissioner Perrier to lead our pledge of allegiance. Desire please pray with me. Merciful and almighty God, we indeed cherish your. Your presence and your guidance and direction in all that we do here today. May our decisions be worthy of your approval. And the best thing for our county is we continue to strive to do your will and serve people the best that we can. We thank you for that. In your holy name we pray.
Amen. Please rise and salute our flag and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag.
Our agenda today is special adjustment approval of the agenda is consented number one chair. Full session for attorney client privilege to that list. Any other discussion or? Changes?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to approve the agenda as written and with the addition of close session.
Any discussion? You're none all in favor say aye. Post not motion carry. First item, item number one is recognition, resolution of appreciation. To entire eat Douglas Harrison, the man in audience with the biggest smile today. I to maybe, maybe if you don't mind, sir, come to the podium there. Resolution of appreciation for you today. Whereas Douglas Harrison has. Served the people of Person County during his tenure, working for the Person County Sheriff's Office as a deputy unit supervisor. Whereas Douglas Harrison has served the citizens of Person County with honor, integrity, sincerity. And dedication, providing accurate concise services for over 28 years. January 1994 through June 2022. And with his sick time, he will retire with 30 years of service with the in sick retirement system. And whereas Douglas Harrison has earned the respect and admiration of all who have known him and worked with him. Throughout his career and whereas the county of person recognizes the many contributions. Douglas Harrison has made to the county and offers him sincere best wishes for his retirement. Now therefore, I will impale chairman of Person County Board of Commissioners do hereby extend this resolution of appreciation. Douglas Harrison for continually striving to make Roxburgh and Person County a better place to live and work. Adopted this 19th day of September 2022, signed Gordon Powell, Chairman, Person County Board of Commissioners. And attest by Brenda Reeves, the clerk treble. Congratulations, sir.
Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind, I'd like to say just a couple of words. Doug and I actually started the exact same day with the Person County Sheriff's Office. I had a few years prior to that, but we actually started on the very first day. And coming through the ranks, if anybody ever worked on the position that fitted them. When he, we got into the warrant squad, that position fitted him. We actually thought about subbing him out to the government when they were looking for foreign dignitaries because he will find them, but it would be missed and congratulations.
Item number two in our agenda is public hearing, but this is a continuation of hearing that was continued from the board September 6th. Meeting and asked so and on if there are any updates, changes that we need to be made aware of.
Good morning, commissioners. I did ask for that public hearing to be continued to allow more time to attempt to. Contact the citizens who are going to be impacted by a potential road naming. At this point, we have exceeded our citizen contact requirements of the ordinance I have called, I have emailed, I have left letters on mailboxes and still have not received a response. So we are fully within our. Purview under the ordinance to continue to move forward at this point, if the board so chooses, or we can. Find some other way to move on.
Any comments or questions from board members?
Do you have a recommendation?
My recommendation would be to go ahead and move forward. It's going to have to happen at some point. Regardless of whether it's now or whether it's in six months. And we do have a party that's building a house out there and it would be a benefit to them to not have to build a house under one address. And then move into a house with a different address. So just with them in mind, and they've been the community to party throughout all of this. With them in mind, it's going to be easier on them and the same level of difficulty for everyone else.
It's not hurting anyone else. Nobody else having an address.
Well, there will be someone whose address changes, but whether it changes today or it changes in six months, it still has to change. So there's not really any, any different impact than waiting.
Other commissioner comments, questions?
Mr. Chairman, move to go into the public hearing. Moved to go into the public hearing.
We had opened the public hearing at the last meeting, continued to public hearing, so we don't have to open any. So we're hearing her updated testimony. There is no one signed up to speak today. So at this point, we're probably able to go get in close.
Right, move to close the public hearing then.
Motion to close the public hearing. All in favor say aye. Close not motion carry. Item number three would be action there by our board. Considering to grant or deny the request as stated.
Move to grant request.
Motion to grant request, given your comments or questions. We're none all in favor say aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
This point in our, our meeting, we have 10 minute period set aside for public comment. We have.
No, sir. There were no ones assigned to speak today.
Number four, we need a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to know that we approve the consent agenda and I'd also like to thank staff for the detailed. Accounting. I appreciate seeing that very much. Thank you.
We have motion to approve. Further comments or questions? You're none all in favor say aye. Post motion carry. Item number five is discussion as county's a token of citizens to boards, committees, commissions and authorities.
Yes, chairman, I believe we've all gotten a copy of the resolutions of appointment process for authorities, boards, commissions and committees. I had asked at a previous meeting, what was our process for appointing people to boards and commissions? And Brenda was kind enough to find the one that has been on file and not, not updated. It was adopted on the 18th of June 2007. So it's, it's never been updated. But reading through section one outlines qualifications, appointments, term limits, absenteeism. Binder information that the county manager keeps on a file. Section two goes in and talks about. The county manager will maintain a list of available positions stating the terms of office requirements and duties. The manager will set a deadline for receipts of applications and publish vacancies twice in the career times at least 45 days prior to the month appointments are due. If there are no applications within 30 days after the first notice, the manager will identify notify the B O C. And at that point in time, the B O C can make contacts and encourage citizens to apply for vacancies. With a deadline at 12 noon on the Tuesday before the B O C's meeting as the deadline for receipts of applications. Now we had an application for the. Car to our agent council. We had one application that had been in the office for over two months. And on a Monday morning, when I came to a meeting, there were two more applications and they were approved. Now I don't think we were following the process. So I'd like to know. Why we did not follow the process?
That we didn't follow the process.
We meet the deadline of two last minute applications, making the deadline at 12 noon on the Tuesday before the next B O C meeting. We did not, in my opinion.
Well, only as a observation, those, the procedures that you're outlined and do really. Are included related to our board's terms that expire on their noted terms, June 30th and December 31st. Those are the two times a year that our terms are due to expire from any of our boards and committees. Otherwise, they're considered as current vacancies or open vacancies that have not filled. According to those term expirations. The particular committee that you're discussing has not, they have had openings for a long time. We have had difficulty getting those filled. Yes, Ms. Bratcher's application was received sometime, there was two seats, so we still needed at least one more application. And whether by means of. During senior center, because we often seek them for that particular committee to aid us in getting applicants in the past. But we've seen some trouble getting applicants, especially through the COVID period. And that was one reason that particular board has decided through the car tar council has decided to lower the number of applicants per county because it's a regional board. So now we only have three seats on that particular committee. And as it turned out, yes, we had Miss Bratcher's application. We needed at least one more application if we received two. And they were presented at a, the next meeting, once we had enough applications, but um. You know, I'm not sure the process and that resolution.
It just, it just states that, that if, if there are no applications 30 days after the first notice. And I'm assuming there was more than one notice if there were two vacancies, it just says that the responsibility of the board. There's a deadline of noon prior, the Tuesday prior.
That is advertised deadline that we use when our terms expire. Were we advertising the paper?
No, 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 this, I'm sorry. I'm, I'm not, I'm just saying this is specific to the board of commissioners. To make contacts and encourage citizens to apply for vacancies. This is the B O C, which is not advertising. And it says with a deadline of 12 noon on the Tuesday before the board's next meeting. So I'm just saying, I just think that this was really inappropriate. To last minute throw in two new applications that nobody, at least I didn't, and I don't know if anybody else had a chance to review them because they weren't given to us. Normally we get a chance to review these applications in advance. And I'm just saying the process is flawed. And I think it's a shame. The way you decide to treat certain citizens versus other citizens. And I hope the paper boy gets that all down.
Mr. Chair, may I?
Sure.
You know, I, I feel like our obligation is county commissioners to put the best citizens that we have on a board. And it's not just qualifications. To me, it's also are they a good fit on that board? If they're not a good fit, we're not obligated to put that person on that board. We vote on it. And you know, if someone. Two months prior applies for a position. It doesn't guarantee they're going to get that position. It doesn't mean we have to take that person that applied for that position. So I think that I understand what Commissioner Gentry is saying. But to me. Not just this situation, but any situation. It ultimately boils down to the county commissioners to appoint and approve. Who we want to be on those committees. So. That's all I want to say.
Sir. My experience on this board with. Board appointments has. Has been one that. Been difficult at times. It's frankly not unusual that we do have applications. On our desk or our table as we come to a board meeting. The main reason is it's very difficult to. Get these positions filled. We have a lot of committees and a lot of appointments. Some of those are mandatory. Some may have specific requirements such as a pharmacist or veterinarian or whatever that requirement might be. But the larger part is made up of volunteers. Volunteers who are willing to use their time. Commit to a particular or specific appointment because of their expertise and their desire to work with the committee. And become a part of that committee and. And help that committee or those committees fulfill their missions and goals. So it is difficult at times. At times, these citizen appointments don't come with any requirement. At times, these citizen appointments don't come with any requirements of, um, backgrounds or degrees. They don't require any specific training to be on that committee. Uh, it just requires, again, a desire to become a part of county government and make progress in, in, uh, working with and getting along with others to, uh, to advance, again, their chosen expertise field or, um, or committee. They have a very big reason for wanting to be there. So again, I applaud all of our volunteers. Uh, person county government would be very weak without volunteers, and I want to commend anyone and everyone that does volunteer, again, to be part of, um, person county government. Again, it doesn't require any kind of advanced training or notice or degrees. Again, it requires commitment and, um, and I commend all who would be a part of, uh, these committees. That's all I have. Okay, that is apparently all the comments. Do we have any kind of motion or suggestion or recommendation?
Mr. Chair, I'd just like to ask Commissioner Gentry, was, actually, I don't know if you finished what you were, I know you were reviewing the documents. Do you have anything else that you has concerns with on that, on the procedures?
Just that we don't seem to follow them. We just kind of really, whatever we decide, whatever, maybe two or three people decide amongst themselves behind closed doors without discussion just seems to be the, the norm.
I see.
I just wonder, why do we have procedures in place if we don't follow them?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Brief comments. Um, there are no statutory requirements about the process for the board to use in appointing members of both boards and commissions. The board has not chosen to include any provisions in our rules procedure. Wouldn't be binding if provisions were in there, at least given individual commissioner raised point of order. Policies that the board adopted in the past are just that, if the board, uh, in a given situation chooses to follow them. Um, I, I agree with, with Commissioner, with comments that Commissioner made about, uh, the, the majority of the board um, having prerogative, um, to appoint members, um, in any way the board, at the, the time they spend, majority of the board. Um, and the comment about commissioners meeting before the meeting. I, I, I don't know. I certainly do not have any factual information that would indicate that anything like that took place. The, the meetings law certainly applies. All deliberations are required by law to be conducted in an open public meeting. Um, anytime that I, uh, in my practice here, um, any indication that members of any other body have not screwed, followed that law. Uh, I certainly speak up and let them and, and, and make them aware that they're requiring to follow that law. I don't have an indication here, um, that there was any violation for what that's for. Board always is, is able, if you wish, um, to amend or to adopt other policies.
I have nothing to substantiate my feeling, other than comments that Commissioner Sims has said to me in the past that, you know, it's three, two, three, two, you're not going to get your way all the time. It's going to be three, two. It's not, you're not going to get your way all the time. On several occasions, that's what he said to me outside of his chamber. So I just have to make assumptions based on what he has said.
And I say that as you're saying. That's you, that's what you're saying. I disagree.
Further discussion. You're none. Item number six on the agenda is request to update funds for replacement. Create all ambulance.
Warren Feshers. So submitted a, uh, abstract for your review, uh, requesting to allocate funds to replace an ambulance that was recently involved in a wreck. Um, since we submitted the abstract, there has been some changes since we submitted the abstract. The, uh, insurance company has decided to total that ambulance, so they're no longer going to try to fix it. The, the damage to the frame was substantial to the point where they just decided it couldn't be fixed. So the proposal in front of you today is basically to purchase an ambulance to replace the one that was wrecked. Um, by our, um, service standard, we typically have six ambulances. Currently, we're down to four. Uh, one of those ambulances, uh, currently is without a transmission. Uh, we're working to get that repaired, but there's some supply chain issues in getting that repaired. Um, and then the other ambulance is wrecked. We are down to four ambulances, uh, from a, um, deployment model, we deploy four ambulances every day, which gives me no spares, gives me no ability to rotate trucks out, get them, get them maintained, anything like that. So ideally, would we buy a used ambulance? No, that would not be the ideal. Uh, but with the market being what it is today, we can't buy new ambulances. Uh, if we were to purchase an ambulance today, we would see it in twenty twenty-five. That's when we would see it. So we have identified a used ambulance, uh, in Ohio. Uh, it's a vendor I'm familiar with. Um, they, uh, worked with them in the past. Uh, I, I think they're, have good integrity. I, I, I feel the unit will be, will meet our needs. Um, so basically, what we're asking to do is allocate a fund balance from the Public Safety Tower project. Uh, currently in that fund balance is two hundred and seven thousand, one hundred and thirty-three dollars. That should be more than what we need for the ambulance. Um, again, um, the market's pretty slim right now. Um, again, I've identified a truck, but I still need to go look at it and inspect it and make sure that it will meet our needs. So we're asking to move that fund balance over in order to basically purchase a pre-owned ambulance of similar cost and quality of what I provided you in your abstract. So I'm open to any questions that you may have.
Mr. Chairman. The, the amount, again.
Uh, two hundred and seven thousand, one hundred and thirty-three dollars is what's in the fund balance.
There are, there are two issues. Uh, one is insurance matter and the other is procurement, the procurement process. I assume we have replacement value coverage.
So a, at this, at this point, from the, from the insurance vendor, they have not given us a, a, an amount yet on what the, what the value of the wreck ambulance is going to be. They've not provided that yet.
Obviously, it's a matter that the county needs to get on with. Uh, if the commissioner seek bid to take action to authorize this, I will work with staff to make sure we follow the proper procurement process.
So if approved, we can proceed and encourage, and even when there's an insurance settlement on that, that would go back to.
Yeah. Staff will speak to that.
Sure. Um, so in speaking with our finance director, she recommended that the post, the insurance proceeds go back into the fleet fund to be used for future vehicle purchases. The amount that we are requesting today to go towards this replacement ambulance purchase is coming from unused loan proceeds in the Public Safety Towers Fund. So it's still within that public safety function, and, um, the other intended projects have all been closed out, and these are the remaining funds. So finance has recommended that we use those towards this purchase.
Board member, questions, anyone?
Motion to approve the request.
Motion to approve the request. Further comments or questions? You're not none, all in favor of the request as stated, say aye.
Aye.
Close motion carry. Thank you, sir.
Thanks.
Item number seven, addition of grounds maintenance worker, unfortunately, equivalency in this car. Maybe Mr. Sheen.
We are here today seeking your approval to convert two part-time grounds positions into one full-time maintenance grounds position. Um, in your abstract on the agenda part, we included the details, but I did want to go over a little bit of our recruitment struggles that we're having. Um, and we wanted to share a little bit about the history of how we have posted these positions. Um, the first time part-time, part-time grounds physician became vacant on February fourth, two thousand and twenty-two, and was not filled until August first. The position was vacant for six months. We advertised during February, April, June, and July. We received a total of nine applications, and we were able to interview three, but unsuccessful in hiring. The second part-time grounds position became vacant on May twenty-fourth. So keep in mind, at this point, we had two vacancies in a two-month period. Um, and we was not able to fill the first one until August first. We had two part-time grounds positions for a little over two months. And, um, the last time we advertised was August fifth, and we placed this advertisement on a continuous cycle. Today, we only have had two applicants, and we did conduct one interview, but again, failed at hiring an employee. We are fortunate enough to have a part-time grounds person in place that has expressed interest in becoming full-time with the county. This not only helps with our recruitment struggles, but it also retains an employee that is seeking more hours. And Director Feshi has worked with our finance department to ensure that the funds are in his department that are available, so we're not making additional amount for request for money. Do you have any additional comments?
You did well. I'd just like to add, so you got an overall picture of the grounds department. Our budget was for supervisor, two full-time employees, and five part-time. That's what we would normally work with to maintain all the county grounds, that's mowing, mulching, seeding, aerating, tree removal, pruning leaves, special outdoor projects. I've always said, in my opinion, these guys invented the cliche doing more with less, because they've always excelled. Right now, we have supervisor, two full-time, and four part-time. If you approve, approve this request, uh, we will have supervisor, three full-time, and three part-time to look after all the county needs and, um, and when I say county, this is all county facilities, all county buildings that have any ground worth, airport, the old landfill, including all the parks. We mow all the parks except for Mayo and Sports Place. So these guys, uh, do quite a bit with less, and, uh, hopefully this, uh, you know, and the ability to add this guy full-time will get us where we can maintain as good as we normally do.
And our hopes to not send them through another hot season, doing the most of the job that they're wanting, so.
Commissioner, questions? Comments?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make motion that we approve this request for additional full-time worker in place of two part-time.
Motion for further, further questions. Yes. You're none, all in favor of the request, say aye. Close motion carry. I would like to compliment you, Sonny and Ray, via all the maintenance workers and the job they do in person can. All of our grounds are always nice. Uh, I, my morning walk, I see your guys leaving their facility on Chub Lake. Typically, this time of year around six forty-five, they're, they're out. The only thing that keeps them from going early is darkness. So they get out, they work, the grounds, uh, are, uh, always picturesque, always showing, uh, dedication on their part to make our facilities nice and welcoming, uh, to the public, so I can give y'all uh, for what you do. Appreciate all the efforts, thank you, and all the others.
They deserve all the credit, and I'll carry you to them, because they are a good, good luck guys.
They are, thank you. Any other comments? Well, as far as, um, Chairman's report, I did attend, uh, Patriots Day ceremony next door in Best Park, uh, last week, and I did, um, uh, Saturday, um, the daughters of the American Revolution, uh, ceremony, uh, Mary Commons, which was a good ceremony, constitute of the day is what they were celebrating. And then, uh, Relay for Life, which was, I know, well-attended, uh, well-put-together event across the street at Huxley and Miss Berry. Compliment, um, John Heel and all those that were involved in that to make a, um, good community effort, uh, for the people of Personkin. Your manager, Ralph Law.
All right, I'm off to stand up today. Oh, and we'll get Catherine to help me a little bit. I was asked to respond to, uh, last meeting, and particularly all of Alena School. We thought to do some research on it. We have, oh, you know, you've had that initial interest in creating some kind of culinary school, a child-friendly school there. Uh, since then, we've had additional interest in someone paying us for the school and creating a little business center, in, in addition to making its home there. But in all this conversation, I have tried to include the school board in this, or the school superintendent. And we, we have different directions, and I am basically here tonight, not tonight, th- this morning, to just kind of seek your opinions and, and get some direction as to where you want me to go on this. Uh, if you look up here, that's on the screen, you've got the full slide out there. That's the, uh, her, connect Alena Elementary School, then the old school building, and, and the properties are adjoining, so, uh, it's it, it just makes it, it sheds a little different light, in particular with the growth that we're experiencing in that end of the county, uh, and the need for future schools. And I, I warn you, when growth occurs, school sites become very valuable, and they become really scarce, because uh, sometimes development occurs and people don't want, after they've gotten a home there, they don't want a school in their neighborhood. They like one close by. So I, I shared this experience because of one of the interim assignments that I had, and, uh, a community had grown, and they somehow had overlooked the real need for schools, and every school they had was over, overloaded to the gills. And, uh, they were trying to uh, find a site for school, and everywhere they looked, it was, uh, they had a chamber, chambers of about two hundred people, and it was full of opposition, because no one wanted it there. So it really created a real dilemma for them. You know, and a lot of it was because of, you know, failure to plan ahead to, to acquire these sites. Uh, Catherine, you, uh, uh, that shows, uh, the, the old school site in itself, uh, and let's see, building three thirteen is currently being used by Parks and Rec as a, um, gymnasium.
Okay, through each instance.
Oh. The, 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 used as a gymnasium, and the, oh, I meant, I'm sorry.
There's the gym.
Good, but yeah, all right. Uh, in, in it's, I, I don't have much activity is there, uh, but I know it is enough that uh, it warrants, you know, it, it's, it's at least keeping the building clean and what, and dry, uh.
Then the activity machine reversed, the number of users, the activity.
So i- it's, it's saying it's a pretty, pretty active little spot, and if I understand correctly, this building does not have, uh, air conditioning in it, so. Uh, it's, it's not one that could be used much in the summertime. Let's go to the next. Uh, this is a building used for storage, uh, by the E M Ts, am I right?
Historical.
Historical society, okay. And remember, this is the first I've seen this. I'm just like you, I'm, I'm having to get up and, uh, Catherine was working on this when I left here Thursday and finished it up over the weekend. But it, uh, we're using one of the buildings, that building for storage, uh, and that one for storage, uh. All right. And let's see, that's the baseball field, walking track in the field. I understand from one of our commissioners that that's actively used, and he uses it in Georgia, and so go ahead. What are we there? And maybe, no, this is EMS. We've got a couple, I, I think it's a combination. And maybe, no, this is EMS. We've got a couple, I think it's a combination of sure. And EMS using that little facility there uh to serve that part of the county. So that, that building is in pretty decent condition, alright? Uh, and the community room and I believe is this, yeah, you had the Board of Elections there, they have a, a selection precinct. So that, that building is still actively being used, okay? And.
The main building before the gym.
Yeah, okay. That's the main building, the main school building. And I believe, is that a picture of the interior of it? Tell me what that, what am I seeing there?
So uh, this is uh, the exterior, the windows are boarded up. Interior, there are quite a few hazards within this building, including asbestos, lead paint, faulty wiring, multiple plumbing damage group, et cetera. So right now it is being used for storage. You got a lot of Parks and Rec storage in this people are building mainly. Um, their, the picture with the sheriff's tape at the top, those are molds that they use for, for craft devices. Um, and then they got some there temporary denting in the picture over to the right. Um, this building is also used for uh training by the Sheriff's Department. I think due to uh that, at the hazards, it does prevent for navigation um. Often been to encounter some real life scenarios within that building. So that's primarily what it's being used for now, but there are many aspects of it that um, do start not functional.
Okay.
It's all good that. And these are just some uh free capital improvements that are planned to take place this year.
So this is on fourteen acre site?
In, in, remember that these two sites connect to the, to the elementary school site and it's, it's some available land of there. The elementary school site was designed for expansion. Uh, however, uh, when you start talking about additional schools, a middle school is what the school would probably propose to put there in the future. Uh, if, if they decided retained.
So we do have two gym replacements this year, holding a roof, the, the. The gym is currently being replaced. And then um, there is also a roof replacement needed for the EMS satellite station. So both of those have been approved as capital projects for this year. In addition, um, the areas that are in red to match the right are uh planned to be paved uh or. Yes, paved in order to improve ADA accessibility to the park, to the gymnasium. And to um, any other uses that are there on the site.
And you can kind of look at these two different options that we have. Uh, that, that's sitting in, in our, either in my office or you've seen uh. And, and as I said, and the third option is to retain this site. Uh, the, currently the roof on the main building is still holding on. However, I see that is, you know, in the not-too-distant future, being in the, in need of replacing. And basically, if you decide to. Keep the building or keep the land and retaining for a future school site. Then I would say that once you started to have that issues with the main building, that that be taken down and still the site be reserved. Any questions that on this, as we go through?
So you're talking about if, if the county opted to retain possession. As owners of the school building itself, you want to look into tearing it down eventually?
Yeah, I think that, you, you know, when you start looking from an economic standpoint, a building that's successful through all the regulations we have today, the answer is yes. Uh, and uh, the. To replace the roof, you've got a considerable amount of money there. That's probably the biggest expenditure you'd have on that building.
Right.
Uh, just continue to, in the shape it's in. Uh, and if the, I, I don't know what the significance of the old building, other than just nostalgia. Uh, I, it, it's, it's probably never going to serve any useful purpose, even with these. I wonder about these things, if it serves a purpose of value that a, a school site would.
What's the footprint of that building? Square footage?
Square, it's twenty-nine thousand.
Okay, so.
Yeah, it's twenty-nine thousand.
What, what would, what, do we know what it would cost to take it down, take it down to, to, to land? Remove it at this point?
Uh, I think you could probably say three to four hundred thousand dollars.
Well, it's cheaper than fixing it, for sure. And then you've got a state, you've got new ground to go forward on. Potential liability to the county and its condition?
I think, yeah, Ray, when you say it's a liability in this condition today, or is it just, it's gonna be?
Well, it's, it's going to quickly get to that point. Uh, it's right now the roof is needing replacing for years. Uh, patch that, people patch it with shingle, there's water leakage. There's asbestos in it, lead paint in it. We've had system vandalism down there where people have broken in and just see what's there, I guess. So I guess there is a certain amount of liability to go with that and it's probably only going to get worse in the future.
Yeah, uh, Mr. Palmer, you asked about it, you, you essentially asking from an established perspective of.
No, no, I'm looking at it as a mon- monetary expen- expenditure. Why would we want to put? Hundreds of thousands of dollars of renovation into it and retain it and then tear it down fifteen years from now?
Well, that's what I'm saying. Once you start, you start having to put money into it, you need to, you need to start looking at how to get rid of it. Yeah, it, because of fact that to bring it up to today's standards, it would be just so costly.
Okay, I'll see what you, I'll see what you're going, where you're going with this now. Thank you.
And I guess from an established, and I'm sure that's of the established people who would like to keep it. And uh, I'll tell you a little story about one of the places I served in one of my interim assignments. They had an old school very much like this, had been sitting. And it had started to deteriorate and it reached a point, the city wanted to build City Hall. And the public said, oh, I went to school there, whatever. So a- as a kind of a compromise, we took some components from that old building. And then the architect designed a new facility that reminded them and I went, actually went to the dedication and. Some people came and said, oh, I remember, I used to come right here at this desk and see so-and-so and check into school and everything. So we just, we tried to retain the character as much as we could, but get a modern facility. So I, I think that's basically what you would probably, if you had enough opposition to keep that look. You could divide, design a school and make it resemble what's there. So uh, there, there are ways to get around that. Uh, but if you ask me for a recommendation, I would say that I would keep this site at full school. And based on pure on my history and what I, I've seen in my past, it, it, these sites are so difficult to come by. And if, you know, I don't know if you keep up with how much growth it is on that end of the county. But uh, we, we have been doing plotting some, some, some growth over the last five years. And what's going on in the southern end of Person County, so.
I would say historically, going back. That building has been looked at several times and had quotes on converting to a school. As early as probably two thousand four or five that I remember. To convert to a school then was two point five million dollars. Of course, when you add the label of school, it changes.
Yes.
Uh, changes the mandates as far as what it's designed for. Uh, but since then, it's been reevaluated several times and it has always been in that two point five and up category. As far as uh, what it would take to renovate the building. I understand the um. The community value, so to speak. Um, it's a historical landmark for that part of the county. My wife went to school there, attended school there and taught there. Uh, and so it's, it's a very important to the community. And uh, so there's a lot of value there. But you do have to balance that in the common sense part here as to its value and its function. Uh, in the county uh, in, in future years. So I appreciate you looking into that and giving us this report.
And as I said, I, with all new utilities there and having enough space combined between the two to expand the elementary school. And build, construct a middle school would be, to me, be the wisest thing. So basically what I'm saying is, I would recommend that you start looking in your budget process, just try to find funds to take that main building down. And uh, all the other facilities are, are still being used, but as you construct a school, you would do that. Any other questions?
No questions.
Okay, the next thing I have is the uh, it's Person County Airport, the new hangar that was constructed. Uh, see if we can get that. Okay, this is a new hangar of, of, an image of the new hangar, I believe, because I don't think it's an actual picture. But anyway, if I get the story correctly, when you originally agreed to uh construct this hangar. You were under, under the opinion it was more to attract a large. Multi-million dollar airplane in there to, to be home base. Uh, and that's just based on rules of governance. Uh, that's not, you can't require someone to, because they rent your hangar to uh. Oh. Put the airplane, put the airplane there and, and have it taxed here. So, but we have had uh some real interest in someone purchasing it and, and putting their plane here. Now, it, this, their option is whether they listed here for taxing purposes or not. But I think that the real thing is the fact that it, it takes an asset that you constructed it. Yeah, to be a nonprofit or non-taxable and it turns it into a taxable. Uh, and uh, I'm going to get Ray to come up and tell a little bit about the details, but we do have some interest. And someone purchasing this uh on a land lease or ground lease uh like a, for thirty years. And uh, we have, have at least a legitimate offer, so I'll turn it over to Ray here, let him. Tell a little bit about the detail.
So I guess uh, it's, it's summarized it quite well, like it says, more than we don't know than we do know, I guess, at this point. But I worked with uh our attorney to come up with a uh proposed uh. Letter of intent. Uh, this gentleman has uh approached Bill Tugus, I have to go numerous times over the past couple of months. Definitely expressed interest in this hangar and has gone beyond that to say that if we allow him to purchase this hangar. He plans to build one twice the size of it, adjacent to it now. Talk is cheap and that's all we have going so far, just talking, but uh. But at this point, uh, our attorney has assisted uh us in preparing a letter of intent, a generic letter of intent. Uh, to uh provide this gentleman, which outlines the purchase process, which would be within. It'd be like surplus property. If he makes us an offer, then we have to go through the upset bid process uh. And open it up to anybody else that may want to add bid in. Uh, he understands that process and uh has no problem with it. But before we actually provided him the letter of intent, we wanted to bring it to you guys today. And just make sure there was consensus among the commissioners that you are willing to uh, to sell this hangar. Again, I don't have a, a finite number, there's no offer been made yet, but we kind of, I say we. Uh, Bill Tugus kind of floated a number in front of him of around four million dollars. And uh, he was, seemed to be okay with that number. As far as the hangar itself, it was appraised at three point one billion. Uh, you might say, well, the project we just went through that, it was more than that, it was more like four and a half million. Well. In order to bring in airplanes the size that accommodate this hangar, we had to add some things to the airport to. Some extended some taxiway curves so the airport could maneuver. We had some set improvements uh. Basically, the uh, the hangar itself, uh, when we look at what we spent on at the hangar, we spent about three million or a little better on it. We spent about one point one million on improvements to the airport. And probably close to a half a million on set improvements at the airport. That kind of lump sums up to about four and a half million dollars, which is what the total price was for. So theoretically, if we were to sell the hangar for four million dollars. For a thirty-year land lease, and again, to clarify what that means, basically. He would pay us upfront for having the hangar, he would own the hangar for thirty years. At the end of thirty years, the hangar reverses back to the ownership of the county. And so he would uh have a thirty-year, some call it a ground lease, some call it we sell, but it's actually the same terminology. He would purchase the hangar upfront for thirty years. At the end of thirty years, everything reverses back to the county. That's kind of the normal in the hangar airport industry and uh, you know, attorney. Atkins, you can add to that if you would like to.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I, just to let you know, I've talked with the general counsel at RDU. This is exactly how RDU does it. Uh, the airport uh retains and because of some. Previous federal grants is required to retain ownership of the underlying real property. So they and we would, they do and we would um. Grant a ground lease for the underlying real property. But then convey ownership of the hangar facility to the private party. Uh, which makes that hangar facility and the value of the ground lease taxes.
Ellis, can you explain the process that we would go through from declaring it surplus to?
Well, I mean, you know, there's, you don't have to formally declare it surplus. Um, you just, the board would um. Take action to authorize staff to proceed with what is called in the statutes, uh, the negotiated. Um, offer and upset bid process. Um, that's the one that just fits here. Um, and as Mr. Boucher said, this, this uh private. Uh, individual, the principal understands that we can't just um. Convey this hangar to him under a contract by private sale. You just can't, statute doesn't authorize that. Uh, the one that does apply is the negotiated offer and upset bid statute. We enter into a contract at the agreed upon price. Um, and for, for the ground lease and the conveyance of the hangar structure itself. Uh, then advertise the transaction and price. Um, and announce to the world as the statute requires that anyone can, within ten days, I think. Uh, submit a higher bid, that's probably very unlikely to happen, not many of these transactions. Uh, but if uh that time um period expires and there's been no upset bid, then the transaction becomes finally binding.
Going okay with that? Uh, and I, I, I guess it today, we're trying to get some feedback from you, which, which direction you would like for us to go?
Uh, Mr. Chairman?
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I, Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Sure.
I, I like the idea of a question, what are the remedies for any kind of default?
Well, I mean.
I mean, I guess the regular legal.
Like the regular, if, if, if he would be a buyer and we were to enter into a contract. Uh, saying that it's, it's really a contingent sale, contingent upon, no one submitting a higher upset bid. But then get through that process, that happened if he weren't to default. Then we have our usual remedies.
Twenty, twenty years in, it's just, you know, I mean, okay.
Well, it's a cash transaction. He would pay.
In advance.
For the advance at closing. Uh, the entire purchase price is purchase price for the hangar. Now, the ground lease, uh, just like any other lease through that thirty-year period. There would be regular lease payments, there'd be stops making the payments, then the, his lease ownership rights stop.
Revert and he's required to maintain the building in a certain.
That would be part of the deal.
Okay.
That'd be part of the deal. And then at the end of the thirty-year ground lease period, as uh, as Mike said, the. Ownership of the hangar structure would revert to the county.
Oh, I like the proposal.
Questions, Chair? Um, okay, you know, thirty years lease is up, right? Um, and what if this private uh ownership decides they want to go further? How does that work? I mean, they've basically paid four million, like they bought the place, but yet in thirty years they don't. And so what happens?
Well, if he goes into this, uh, that's why I understand some that that is going to happen at the end. Uh, and at that point, it would just be simply a negotiation process again. Um, the, the. Um, the, the
Probably like another sale?
This company or the successor, um, like another sales transaction.
Would they have a right to reassign?
Uh, we would, I would suggest that we not give them and um, a, a, a complete right to reassign, reconvey, that it would be subject to the board's approval, this board's approval.
Uh, I would agree with Mr. Boucher. Uh, talk is cheap. We're going back about four years when I recently made the recommendation uh, that the county pursued this project. And it was unanimously approved, and essentially there at that time, it's, the fault was, it's business. And it would be a revenue generator. Uh, selling, that happens in government, usually it's sold the way around, but it's always expenditure, so uh, from the uh, viewpoint of generating some income for the county, it still stands. It has taken a little different shape than I think any of us thought uh, in the beginning. But uh, I like this concept, I, not that I'm an expert, but I read the draft letter uh, that will go to the prospect. Uh, from my perspective, it, it looks good and sounds good. And uh, so I see it going forward as still again, a very good thing for not only the airport, but for county. And uh, the, if we were able to have this deal go through, uh, we're five hundred thousand dollars short. That five hundred thousand dollars could go back to the um, sewer project that was mandated. We had to do that anyway, uh, so it was not just an add on expense, so um, I see it as a, as a very good deal for uh, for Person County go.
Chairman, one more word about the property tax site of the uh, private aircraft. Uh, there's lots of law about where uh, an aircraft is cited for uh, property tax purposes, he can't, the owner can't just wave a magic wand and, and declare that it's that the site is, S I T U S, um, is somewhere else other than Person County. If the aircraft um, usually is physically present here in Person County in that hangar, uh, Russell is probably probably going to declare that that aircraft is cited in Person County for property tax purposes.
Can we start this process today if they choose to declare it surplus?
You know, again, they don't have to declare a surplus, um, I, I, it, as far as I'm concerned, uh, in order to proceed, all we need from the board is an expression of your desire, uh, emotion. Um, with the majority voting, instructing the staff to proceed with this process.
Yeah, that's your, your.
Mr. Chair, I have a question, the uh, four million, we get four million dollars for this, uh, where will that go?
I have some thoughts I'll share with you at the next meeting.
I'm just, I'm just saying, we get four, we got four million dollars now, four million dollars cash. Where, where, where are we going to put that money?
Well, it, it comes back to the general fund.
General fund, that's all, okay, good.
To the county.
Okay, good.
There are plenty of good places to put it.
Oh, absolutely, we got a lot of people that want to spend our, spend money out of the places, but I'm just saying, it goes back to the general fund.
Now, your joy, uh, you.
My recommendation is to move forward.
I concur.
I, I agree.
Are you?
Proceed.
Okay, I have one final thing, uh, we talked about the meeting space here, you could, we've spent a conversation piece since I've been here. So uh, we've been working.
Excuse me, to clarify, was there a motion and a board vote on that instructing the staff to proceed?
Was not a formal motion.
No, it wasn't a formal motion, I, I didn't consider that.
I think for the record, the staff needs a motion and a vote of the board to proceed with the process.
I would make that motion, I would proceed. Comment or?
Under, under the negotiated offer and upset bid um, process in the statutes.
You have a comment, Miss? I'm fairly, uh, motion as stated, so I had.
Okay, the, the final thing I have to say is, we tried to start letting you get some vision as to what this building would look like split up using as a multi-purpose room, setting up the space for the uh, meeting space, and Ray's got a couple sketches that we're supposed to pass out. Where the architect just done some rough drawing of how to do it and we're trying to be sure that we own the things back that you, you want us to be, Ellis. You will look at these sketches and just kind of say, this is one I like, I like one better than the other, oh.
Basically, you've been connected to one of them. And this, just two quick renderings from the architect, uh, if you see one of them puts you guys up on the stage and shows some permanent seating, and then uh, and temporary seating behind that, and of course, it could be configured anywhere you might want, the other one show you in front of the stage. And granted, in front of the stage, you give a little more room, space out, but uh, you know, and some permanent seating in both, but it all depends on what you would like to pursue. I asked architect, give us like three or four different choices, and he was able to give me these two this morning, so it just that you guys take a look and see what might be your main interest and uh, you know, if you were on the stage, as maybe I mentioned earlier, we would have to put a, a chair lift or a handicap lift over here on one side, just in case anybody was ever in a position to need wheelchair. That would be an extra, uh, but uh, there's no doubt you'll bid on the stage. It'll be probably about like it is upstairs, just kind of a little more crowded arrangement, but uh, but we ought to throw some options out there so you guys could uh, think about it and uh, may give us some direct and what you'd like in pursuit.
Question, on, on the floor plan, if you've got the, what would you call it, the desk, the council area, is that something that is movable type of situation? Is there some kind of interlocking mechanism where you, you know, you've got a bolted floor mechanism, like a, like a trail, a, a track system, that if you needed the space, you could roll those things off? The chairs obviously are movable, but I'm just thinking about the horseshoe type desk, is there something?
My opinion would be anything probably be done, but you know, we have another problem, if we make it movable where you could disassemble and roll it, you gotta put it somewhere, and really, there's no good place around it that I have ideal storage movement, so probably what I'd do would be an elevated type platform to lift you guys up some, I would suggest whatever you do be a permanent fixture and the rest of it, you know, and even to the point, I'm showing the permanent seating, that doesn't have to be there, it could all be chairs and then it would be uh, movable seating, but again, just trying to throw some things out so you could think either way, we could put negative permanent seating up front, we could leave it all as movable chairs but uh, trying to make it the best area for you guys and we can pop, come up, we had something that's there and we don't have to sit up and down, that IT can permanently wire everything in and you know, not have to have a cord around all of the floor like you see now, so we're trying to make something that you guys would be proud of, but we need your guidance.
How often do we use the stage?
Never, I think in my ten year of about twelve, thirteen years, I think I can remember using it maybe twice. Now, that would be for county events, I can't really say if it's used on a weekend for private individual functions, but uh, county events probably a couple times.
I think for the citizens, like what we have right there, I mean, have, being able to have that projector for them to, to see is, is a good thing for them. Um, and I don't know if there's anything we've looked at that to change monitors or anything like that for the, for the public of sitting out there to see. Um, I do think, as you said, probably cramped quarters up here on the stage, even though we don't use it. Um, but uh, obviously being here, uh, and then you can still use the screen, I would assume back there, right?
We, uh, could, and we would actually talk about putting two large lawn TVs in this supposed angled wall you see on either side of it, maybe up high.
Okay.
It's part of, it's part of renovation, I guess, a couple things we're thinking, number one, we'd do the lower ceiling. And uh, redo the, the air conditioning or duct system, because what we're being told by those folks is the reason is so noisy when it runs. And you're trying to push all the air through four units or through four outlets. You do with eight outlets or ten outlets, and air would be so full to come out, it would climb out, so with a drop ceiling, we could, we could make that change. They want to do uh, some uh, sound digging on the walls, but uh, you know, the uh, the monitors in the corner, we had talked about, you know, putting up, uh, so a few things that we know we got to do and the rest of it, you know, to enhance whatever you guys want.
What's the mechanical system, is the stage that?
Then all the return air goes through the stage and then up and over and back, so if we can't block those vents.
We don't want to mess with moving that.
And that concrete, this concrete floor in that stage, this, it'd be a big old deal to do away with. So certainly could have more practical tools, that's what, oh yeah.
They can be painted at least the same color as the walls.
And you know, it was talked about, you know, and not, I'm stealing your thunder here, but it kind of gave you a picture of what might be available, there was talk about putting a very practical curtain about from the corner of where it says elevate all where it falls, and this could be your permanent quarters, and it wouldn't be taken down after every meeting, it'd be permanently here. And we set up those tables and chairs back there just to show you some idea, okay, if we took out this room and made it yours, they're not going to tear anything down. That's still not much left back there, and easily set, you know, with tables, you know, fifty people and uh, you know, probably, oh well, a hundred people that is doing it in uh, chairs, so you couldn't possibly uh, split it up that way, and then if there was a major issue coming toward you guys, where you expect a big crowd that would turn up and put cameras digging all over the back like we do now.
Questions, Mr. Freeman? You seem to be a frequent user, any brain comment you might have?
Yes, sir, uh, this room has been used to the public and for extension and within government offices for fifty years. Fifty years, the average of three, four times a week. It's a unique feature for the county, in that there's not a lot of places this large that you can get for, for, now you guys as an example, for when aging or death, uh, aging with the death stuff. We have this place high. We have vendors coming in for everybody. Where would we go? Once again, a lot of this is going to be done heavily, so we have so much stuff to give out, teach women, although we can hold. We had challenges maybe to them here, there's a major one now. You get this in hand, they're not going to fit. They just, they're all hurting, and you teach them, well, they have long studies, but we analyze this entire state. The uh, Extension Community Association. They come in here with their meetings, we've addressed our regional meetings. We bring in people from outside here, the Person County, because of this facility and this housing. Once again, if you look in the, some of the archives, this room was built to be a part of the education, informal education of the community. And when we reduce it, and excuse me, but for two meetings a month, and you just took out twenty-eight other days, you can't use half of them. So I'm somewhat would prefer if we can make it mobile. Because like I said, we use the upper end for ice cubes. Oh, you gotta have some space for youngsters. We do it for summertime, once getting COVID, we haven't had a lot. But we're getting back into the flow, people are coming out more. We got a lot more people attending our meetings this year than last year. And because of that, they're, they're more people again. So, yeah, I, I understand you can get crap and then all the other components up there, but I also know you're going to change the way we have to do this for us as well as several other groups that have come to know this space and there's places to put on them, so other people calling them, I guess that's. Uh-oh, I didn't know I was going to get that one.
It's a deserve.
Well, you can see what the dilemma is, trying to figure out exactly how to do it.
Going forward, uh, any comments or recommendations that uh, Mr. Parker could pursue? Likes and dislikes of either of these?
The measurement back here, wall, wall, uh, has anybody measured compared to upstairs in the room? Almost identical. You know, one of the reasons we, we moved down here was because of, you know, the upstairs getting so crowded, and we have meetings that are, you know, very important to the public, where they want to come out and make public comments and that sort of thing. Maybe you look at today, morning session, we probably could have everybody upstairs in the, in the seating area right now. So, um, you know, it's one of those things where, uh, again, i- if, if we I don't want to see us overcrowded upstairs, and if we could do something to change, that would be great as far as this place here, um, I, I don't want, I, I understand Bo's standpoint of view there, and I don't want to take away something that's being used, I mean, we, we've cut the number of people that could come in here and meet. Um, you know, but then also kind of worried about back here being so crowded, so um, can't make everybody happy, just got to figure out which way is the best way to go for this, for the, where we want to have our board meetings.
Do some sort of margin orders?
I, yeah, it's actually margin orders, because in fact, yeah, it's, it's one of the things that I, I, I understand you want to be in a place that you can look and be proud of, and also have adequate space to have your meetings. I don't know how often you have ran, you were running over at your upstairs place, if you're upstairs meeting. Or I, I just, I don't know the history there, so is that something that you know more about than I do?
That doesn't happen all that often, change that particular question, but uh, best use of this facility as far as our board is concerned, Commissioner Sims' comments about public uh, coming in here and participating in our meetings, um, is a major point of consideration, I think.
Are there other locations, other facilities for community center, other gymnasiums that can? If we're going to get four million dollars into the general fund, is there something else that we can enhance to replace some of the lost work footage that might need for community events somewhere else in the county?
I'm not sure if there are other facilities that we could enhance to replace this, if you book a community event.
I mean, the biggest other facility we have, as Commissioner just mentioned, are gymnasiums and, you know, that would I mean, the biggest other facility we have, as Commissioner just mentioned, are gymnasiums and, you know, that would. Certainly be beyond our curfew availability, that would be Catherine and Dawn would have to address those, but. And we had the assembly area then, Hellinga School, uh where you both down there, which is. We have a thing on.
Right.
But close by, right around here, large open areas, you probably talking to gymnasium, Hudson's Berry. Is about it, that comes to mind, right?
Are there numerous unused office spaces on any floors in this particular building that could be opened up?
We have been moving people around some time, and we've been tearing out closets and taking files to places where file rooms and making. You know, spaces out of them, so I, I don't, I, I don't know of any, and. Oh, I think that, to respond back to Bo's comments, you know, when you start looking at his office and all this four H stuff is right here in this ring. And the elevator is very convenient to get stuff here, so this room is convenient for them, but again, oh.
Might have to compromise.
We, we certainly can go back and redraw this and rework with it if you'd like, if you, if you still feel like you want to be down here. Uh you know, architects, usually architects are pretty creative, oh, so.
The only space in this building, and again, I'm not definitely, though Bo had addressed, is this open area. It's only extension pool, Bo's got two kitchens, if you could possibly knock it all down and combine them together and make one large area. And I divert back to you.
For a living space, that would be terrible, but. Narrow like a chop.
The, I'm looking at the drawing, we got uh the one where it looks like you have two, like stadium. Uh rows, I guess, for people to sit, is that right, what we're looking at? You got one, it's got one, two, three, and then you got two here where people were sitting out in the audience with.
Kind of like, it was drawn in, there's few seedings, you know, visible, it doesn't have to be there, but yeah, that would be permanent, drawn in as. Potential permanent seat.
So if you, uh if you took those out, and we just use seats like we have here right now. That would certainly give more room for this, for this area here.
It would allow for your, your council, your board seating there.
Right.
Still, only, only take a small part based on.
Eight to ten feet this way, and I don't know what your dimension is, I can't count that quick.
It looks like this, according to that drawing, if you were to just. Put the, would be like right along here, would be in front of your uh U shape on the uh. You're sitting down on the floor.
You call that a deus?
About where the light switches are, it looks like.
Deus, that was the word I was, I was going to find group.
I would think a little more detail might even more, if you work with you guys, and I don't know about the stage, I think it's. Up there, it's too confined, the exits are, and there's steps and behind the walls. Uh, that can sit there, possibly due to emergency, possibly, so a little more detail here. And I don't know about the practical use of the stage, um maybe some highlights, Person County.
Yeah.
Uh Hollywood displays or eating or murals of lakes and what's going on up there. I don't, those, address it up, uh something up there that makes it.
About if we take the drawing, would you sitting on the, in the floor area, not, not using it on the stage and try to modify that in some way?
Yes, yeah.
Come back to you.
Handle that all with the rolling curtains.
All right, that's all I have.
Jake, efforts on all those, thank you very much. Uh, Commissioner Sims?
I have no report.
Um briefly, I would like to address the Relay for Life event Friday night. Come by a couple of times. Once it was around five PM, and then again about seven thirty-ish, and it was packed. Uh people were very pleasant, they were seen to be very pleased with what was going on over there. I talked to. Community members and family members who had been, uh they were very thankful that they had this set up. Here, and um I just, I, I, I thought it was a great event myself. I, I did walk around the track one time, and it was just packed with people. Uh John Hill still here? He put on a heck of an event. That's all I have, and thank you county employees for all that you do.
Mr. Johnson? Yeah, for the comments?
Mr. Perry, you?
No report. Samo.
For the, for, under the attorney class, um exception.